It's gonna be about ten minutes late and report of the minutes. September tenth. Been posted, published, distributed, any corrections to the minutes? This will stand as posted, under finished business, water quality testing.
I've got reports back over the last two months. Give you a lot of questions, local companies around, local. Do you see filters? Why should they keep asking me how much it costs us? What's this cost? They're trying to ask us how much the charge is for the carbon clean out. And again, I say, I don't think that's right. But it's hard, it's free, so. Like, a lot of companies are stuck with the bill. Won't get stuck with the old records too. For GAC filters. Yes, and come back good.
Alright, ARP discussion.
Uh, stare at the projects going, stare money to set.
So, just because repetition helps me remember over time. So, all the funds are encumbered, right? And then it's just in the work in progress to move through the, uh, use of those funds and what they've been doing. Alright, five-year plan.
Any updates that's been applied to your mapping, your chart? So, uh, your own schedule?
The... What, um, so what did you wave around there? Just for...
It was a chart.
Oh, that, okay. Right, right, okay. Alright, dredging.
Uh, Mike, Russ asked me, Dave, if you had to write away.
I, I, I'm working on it. I've not got it all the way done yet. We, I've got the person working on it.
So, uh, talk about dredging, I know it's just from people, wow, cities ask, when are we gonna start that? That's not gonna start next month, it's not gonna start December, it's not gonna start, I'm looking at five months of next July to start that project, like, right?
I mean, probably the easiest is to wait till it dries up.
You don't go by flow, you know, springtime, July, it's one of them, that hurts. Dry up next month, July, and get out, and, you know, all that to bring in also.
I can relate, Amber made the guys move her plants out today. And, I mean, we're talking about, the guys were like, they're soaked. We want you to show up, you don't have a choice. I can don't control the weather. They were.
So, we'll get off this, so, we're clearing it, get it out, and just get pricing.
Best case scenario.
Time frame to do it? You shouldn't have that too much. I mean, at least with the drive, you have front run, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, it depends on, you have to have two crews or one at the head. You know, sequentially then, may, maybe.
Too much, optimistic.
Alright, can we just skip E? Alright, E, rate study update?
Rate study update, uh, the water, we did that, talked to Michael Griffith, and, um, water is completed, the step program, uh, three-phase stepping each year. Sewer is not completed yet, in addition to two weeks, so, the next meeting, in two weeks, I will put in y'all's drop boxes, is water in sewer, rate study, three-step, three-year program. I'd hope to get it, y'all can review, we discuss it, I'll have Mike, I'll have Amy here, and we will discuss it.
And this does not impact stormwater, right? Or, we've had some conversations about that generally, but this rate study is not, does not incorporate storm, right?
Not this time. We can do that after we can just complete it, we can start on that in January, start how you all want to do it, want to do it by unit? Partial, um, goes to, partial, I think, president should say, so.
Alright, storage tank update?
I don't.
You don't think? I was gonna say, I don't think they do.
Yeah, I don't think they do.
So, who's the closest city to us, like, how's the storm?
I need to draw something, that could be, Bay, Morgantown. That'd be else has to be, St. John's. So, Bridgeport, Parks Park.
Yes.
Oh, Parks Park, and Stormwater Park. I don't think they decided, really bored or. Yes.
Uh, great, our, our storage tank update?
Yeah, Craig had asked me to put together something, just to kind of go over the results of the, um, of the water tanks, just a reminder of where everything is. I did switch the name to the ITC tank, and is that what we're calling it?
I've always called it seminary.
Seminary tank. Uh, just so everyone remembers where they are, and we're just go, um, and we're here, so, uh, the Ninth Street Tank, this is one of the ones that rehabilitated in 2015. Uh, it's thirty years old, one hundred thousand gallons. I hope you want to hear this.
Okay.
Uh, so, from our inspections, uh, but this would be pretty common, is the power wash, the tank, grizz, mold mildew. Of course, mostly on the side, it doesn't get any sun. There's some touch-up painting that is required on the handrail sidewalls. Also paint the areas of the concrete foundation, that's from the pictures you can see there, where, um, you know, it was coated the one time, it looks like they just didn't coat all the way down to grade. There's some branches that need trimmed, and then, probably the, the main concern was the center cable from the ladder is actually going down with the, um, uh, safety rope on it, so it would be best to get that away from there, just for safety sake. The South Tank, which is the new one that was built in 2015, it's four hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons. As you expect, even being new, we didn't have as much information on there, there's, uh, getting the power wash, and then, uh, touch up the paint on the sidewalls, and that's just a common, you know, someone's weed eating around. Something will chip the paint, so that just needs to be taken care of as it happens, to make sure that it doesn't get any worse. Jackson Park Tank, you may remember that, we put in a, one big tank, it used to be three smaller tanks. Total capacity there is six hundred and ten thousand gallons. And same comments, you know, being new, there's really no, no real issues other than power wash and some paint chip. Millstone Tank, it was rehabilitated in 2015, didn't have a date when it was constructed, I don't know. Would have been. You know, the older tanks, again, power wash the tank. Uh, there is issue with the overflow pest screen, or is, is buildup, that's what that picture is trying to show up there. There needs to be some work on, on the flange there, just, just painting it. There's, you can see where it's washing away there, uh, the ground, so, put in a concrete splash pad would be recommended. There was some buildup of water inside the valve bolts, so, so do something with it, just trying to get that water out, just to get along the life of the piping in there. And then re-ground and coat the concrete foundation, you can see where it's spoiling and cracking there. Uh, the seminary tank, um, originally construction sixty-three, it's the one we rehabilitated in 2015, it's a two hundred thousand gallon capacity. Power wash the tank, um, the concrete foundation was having some issues, it probably should be painted with acrylic. There's seal fractures in the base cone concrete floor, and that's what the picture up there is showing. And then, please, where's the condensate access to? There's some actual improvements that should be considered, uh, one would be to, um, actually install a catch basin or something that can catch the flow there, it's, it's hard to tell there, but that's just filled in with a pipe with concrete in it, that's where it, it washes away all the time, so you get something and get it out of the way from there, would be best. Uh, the pest screen, that's what that is way back in there, so it's really hard to access, so I could think about putting something on the end, more of a duckbill or flapper type. Uh, and then, with the recommendations, but, for fencing, just to keep people from vandalizing, uh, structure. Uh, the only other thing was just the annual maintenance, I think, uh, Craig's guys do this anyway, but just wanna put that in there of, of items that should be done annually, a couple things, say, twice a year. But that was, uh, what we'd found during our investigations. You have any comments?
No, uh, yeah, the fresh wash of the tanks, it, it should be done once every ten years, we just don't have the key. And specialized, we can do the bases, foundations, I think, but, uh, I don't think we need to, something else, we had to have them come in and start fresh washing all these tanks five-year basis. I know that the screens that went up, there were some issues with the screens, they were tight, the screens, they weren't installed, or bug proof, I guess, so. We have to pay them. Okay, do you guys, start writing some specs up, fresh wash these tanks. The painting, touch-up paint, is that something we can do in-house? Alright, it's just concrete, on, on the tank itself.
Well, yeah, I guess it's the two different ones, for the, you'll want to repair the concrete, and then coat it, and then, for the tanks. You know, they should, I don't know if they actually gave the paint, but you can contact the manufacturer and ask them what kind of paints, it's just, you know, something difficult to do in-house.
Uh, the fencing around the elevated tank, uh, we've talked about that in the past, we didn't, we should do that, because the location of it, but it's, it really should be done. UP and see what type of fencing that they would, I'd see, I think it does install, especially a lot of activity up early. I say that, I, uh, we can get decorative fence up, or we can change. Y'all agree, I'll go and start writing on specs, so, fresh washing the tanks. Uh, bunch of paint, something like that, we'll do in-house, the fencing, we'll get it out. What type you all wish.
It does have a camera system, it doesn't? It does have a camera system on it, doesn't it?
On the tank?
Yes.
Oh.
So, there's no cameras?
No cameras in these tanks.
Even one of those one?
Uh, that camera system's bad. They created backbuck systems. We don't use that anymore, so.
Is it possible for someone?
It's always that possible, yes. Uh, we're security issues on the tank, the ladder's locked up, there is fencing on other tanks, but we still had get inside, and then this was that's what, dude, we've had, years past, we've had people on tanks. You don't get that. There are several locks, safety factors on that. The only one that does have fence around is
Do you have any type of motion lighting? Motion lighting, in other words?
Motion lighting, yeah.
I was thinking, when somebody gets a light shine on them, when they come up to something, that's a pretty big deterrent. And that's, because you said backbone, I mean, was that, were you talking about some type of internet backbone?
Yeah.
When we first got this, then we put a backbone, or our telemetry, or our system, or our meters, bounce from tank to tank back here, but since we switched out meters with the cellular network, we don't, we don't use it, we probably use some others.
Is it still a capability we have?
Yeah, it's, it needs all of it.
Um, so, in the way of internet access to our city, to cover a lot of the cameras that are, have, city, have been in conversation here, we have equipment already in the city to store it. That will provide, uh, basically our, like, address across the entire city, city, city. Access to the public. Um, but it has the capability of, you know, broadcasting, a citywide broadband, that would be, by the city of here. Through IT, that it would be able to utilize to touch all of these various Wi-Fi ones that we have. So, that is currently being, uh, looked at and viewed by, 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 or
Yeah, because if you don't get it, I can tell you, you know, I can, I can provide video footage to the sheriff's department of the guy's face this close. And, you know, if you don't get the alert when it's happening, you know, um, you know, then, it's, yeah. So, having something after the fact has never been helpful in my experience with law enforcement. Yeah, well, the, uh, yeah, you're no sheriff's department. Um, anyway. So, if it, huh?
This is chainsaw.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's about, I'm up to about eighty grand over the years.
Oh, I agree.
The, uh, even, the, um, you know, so if that was a consideration, and we have that capability, you know, if something's going on, you know, and again, I, you know, when you talk about Michael's point, you know, in terms of you got tampering, I mean, would that, would that be occurring up high, or is it, I mean, obviously you've got, I mean, you're not gonna have, you're not, you don't have ports at the bottom of the tanks that somebody could access.
Oh, it, it would be a good thing, too, because you would have five hundred thousand gallons of water.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, 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 yeah. So, you know, so, I mean, the, the, you know, the, the that kind of a, of a threat probably is not a big threat, but obviously could have a big impact. I'm just saying, if you use cameras, if you don't send alerts when it happens, um, a lot of times you just, you, you have no ability to do anything about it.
Last time we had some issues, we didn't, didn't think about it either, so, it was underage and, so. Right.
Actually, attractive nuisance.
Carried an angel up to the problem, in fact. Carried an angel up, you know, to the problem, thanks.
So, would you think more of a, you know, like, somebody sent, you know, something that sensed somebody's, you know?
Well, yeah, there's definitely the camera on the ladder system, good at each thing, I mean, that's definitely, yeah, area.
Back to Jim's point. Is it, he's something that's going to hurt, and somebody from having them, you know, say, oh, God, somebody had the, it's getting ready to climb the ladder that's in there, or is it, hey, we discovered that somebody depended, you know, I love whoever was on the tank, you know, with the back. It's gotta be real talk. Chain it to him, can we put a dog inside each of the pens?
Hey, I've got a dog I'll donate, I got from my daughter.
Have none.
We have, we have. Because there is, kind of a, a system of grants and since that, get equipment, or, you know, fees and services that that apply to cameras, where those systems aren't going to be cost of the money. Software, so you have to have the subscription of those cameras that run on a monthly basis, and it's a thousand dollars per month. Uh, what was projected of moving there. Basically, it's Yeah. Yes, and camera, camera's not a, it's a, monitoring subscription that comes along with, it's a thing.
I have not seen, I know that when they come in, that, they come in and monitor us. Four years ago, we sit down with them, they, they was high suggesting they install a camera system at that time.
Alright, anything more on the tank updates? Alright. We're on to new business approval of engineering services.
Uh, yes, this comes from the RFUs we did this past, or last week, uh, we sat down, the panel sat down and interviewed two engineering firms. South, the Quest and the Paper, we got two engineering firms to return, uh, the proper paperwork, and interviewed both firm. It was, it was close, uh, we did it on point system. Here, there, it was good interviews, both firms, actually, yeah. First, Michael, Mike presented, first, Michael, then they had a pickering session. Each individual, uh, asked questions, entered point systems, highest point, company won, and it was close. Uh, four hundred possible points, three hundred and eighty-five points coming, Mike and first Michael, so we are here to recommend that first Michael be our, continue to be our engineering firm for the next, these next five years. General engineering stuff.
I make a motion to accept the service agreement.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, indicate by raising your right hand? Motion passes unanimously. That was from when I was ballot commissioner, that you had to sign every absentee ballot in the county, and that was like, took almost two days. And I told him, I said, if you don't change the, get with legislature, I quit. I mean, I, I literally had to go to chiropractor. It's crazy. Alright, so, so, I've signed off on that, after unanimous approval, uh, so, under new business B, approval of task quarter twenty twenty-five dash O one, miscellaneous professional services.
Yeah, um, this is the one where we do any kind of the small stuff, that doesn't require, you know, a big agreement, uh, things like the five-year plan, the updates to the stormwater, annual reports, uh, small things like that, that, you know, are small, I get authorization from Craig to do them, so, um, it, it's just any kind of general stuff that is too small to mess with a whole task order.
And so, this is something we, this is just kind of a continuing approval, this is the way we conduct business in the past. So, first of all, entertain a motion for approval of task order twenty twenty-five O one, miscellaneous professional services. One second. Alright, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand? Opposed, none, uh, approvals passes unanimously. Uh, new business C, approval of task word twenty twenty-five O two, water system improvements phase one.
Again, Mike? Yeah, this is, uh, this is always the fun ones, these are the EJ CDC, uh, standard agreements that the funding agencies make us do. Uh, it is for the water plants, or the, I'm sorry, the water system projects, uh, it's
Y'all read that, right?
Yeah. I'll just entertain any question. Uh, I don't know how to even explain where it is, but, um, what we're doing now, uh, would, what you'd be authorizing today uh, would be the prelim, preliminary design phase, the final design phase, uh, which is, uh, preliminary di, design phase is ninety thousand nine hundred dollars. Final design phase is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred dollars. And then, also, the additional services, which would be survey, uh, survey, funding, uh, assistance and easement exhibits, which would be, show it's total here, so. Yeah, eighty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars, so it'd be, that would be what you would be approving today. It does have, uh, fees in there for bidding and construction, but we'll come back before that happens to finalize.
What's the total amount that I'm gonna be including?
It's a schedule in here.
Yeah, I think there's
It's, it's, um, it's a computer section.
So, if we say ninety, ninety, and
Fifty-seven.
Sixty. Five sixty-ish.
Ish, always the ish.
That's the, yeah. That's the reason I'm concerned myself an engineer.
So you got.
So it's.
Lump sum totals, six ninety-nine, eight hundred, uh, A through F. From studying report through post-construction, you're saying the ninety thousand nine hundred, the three seventy-seven?
Yes.
I assume the five thousand, the study and page report is that?
It, it's already been paid, so that's up to you guys whether you request that back or not.
So we're going to be in C, is that right?
Yeah, B and C for that part, and then on. Further backwards, additional services. What was that number again? Eighty-eight, nine.
So for the survey. What's funding assistance?
Any of the applications that we would have to do. Yes. Yes. Yes, yeah, so it'd be. Only thing we're gonna be starting on is the design, which is the preliminary and final, and then the additional services. The five thousand we've already done, yes. Three, three, yeah, three sixty-six. Three C S. It's fine, I, I got five fifty-seven.
Again, and then also the additional services.
Right, that included it, yes.
You know, so when you're talking about, and I'm just trying to understand this, but the, you know, when you're talking, you know, twenty-two thousand bucks for funding assistance, filling out applications and so forth. That's fixed fee stuff that you're just, you're just pricing that as all, all paperwork we have to do, or is gonna be included in, or charging you twenty-two thousand.
Right, because you don't have an administrator, we'd be doing that too through construction, so any of the pay estimates that come in. You know, we would do, um, the wage interviews and the, and the, uh, dispersment requests and things like that through the funding agencies. And, and those, you know, that, those numbers are hourly rate, so it's, you know what, if you don't spend it, you know, you don't.
That was kind of what I was driving at, is this a flat fee, or is that your estimated, uh, number of hours based on applications we see, and then it will be as. We'll actually pay as billed, so we could have unaccompanied phones coming back to us from this.
Right, yeah, and if you had someone that would take care of that kind of stuff, then, you know, that money would just, wouldn't be used.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, all right, any further discussion?
I had a general question. When there's, you got A three Y, I wish A three T in this water replacement.
Yes.
I know this comes later after what you did, the one we're looking at is data completion.
As far as construction?
Yeah, we're looking at years.
Yeah, you're probably two and a half years, maybe three now.
And all this is mapped out in your five-year plan?
It is, it's part of the five-year plan, that's why, we always work three, four years ahead.
Thank you.
Right, good for discussion. Hearing none of them, we've already had a motion second.
Did we do a motion second?
Yeah, we did.
I'll make a motion for it.
Second. Motion second, we've already had discussion, anything further? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand, opposed, none, motion carries unanimously, um, so, page, signature picture somewhere.
Yeah, there's two of them on, on this, one would be signing the task word and the agreement itself, and if you want this, find them, it's not a mark. Those things are hard to find.
Where's the second signature?
It is, uh, it's, yeah, the one on the second page, and then it's. Let's see. And if you go to, it's speech twenty-four, twenty-five.
Well, we have this job available for filling out applications.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mike already said it's available.
I had a. Day is like, yeah. We still got voids in our work department. Interview guys, first thing, they don't show up for interviews, when the guys do show up for interviews, we do, we do offer positions, they. Sometimes they don't take it, sometimes they do, and, uh, we wait two weeks for, a two-week notice in their, their jobs, and, and they don't show up for the day of the, first day of employment. So, and it happened this, this morning, so it's. You know, other stuff out, it'd be difficult, so. Yeah, can't even get guys coming to work, so it's.
So does that constitute your manager's report? If not, you, anything else to add?
Yeah, manager's report or just that one?
Well, the, uh, I, I'm gonna take that as part, as the introduction to your manager's report.
Yeah, that's it, that's the best way to start off. Getting employees, uh, and we got, you know, our staff. We got a lot of guys, uh, like guys retirement age folks, I, I know you, I've preached this before, and I'm, I need to preach it, uh. There were several guys here at retirement age, and we're gonna lose the next two years, we're losing a huge department of our. Our employment, uh, employees, skilled employees that we've had for many years. I love it through retirement, but there's some injuries that, you know, the guys are experiencing that, uh, don't have a lot of lost time for medical conditions. Say you were hurt, you really are, you know. I, you know, it's, it's the wages, benefits, it's a whole package, a lot of guys just don't want to. It's hard to get employees, it's, interview the guy today, very positive, if he comes along, we offer him position, uh, in meat, in water department. He has some great qualifications, uh, water department, I'm, I'm, you have to have your class one, class two operators, and these are the guys that's gonna retire, that's our skilled labors. I'm losing quite three of them in two years.
So, a couple of things on that, you know, we were talking about, you know, class one, class two operators, what, what's, what's the training requirement?
One-year experience for class one, five-year for class two. And these are in the water department. We lost our, one of our syrup, I mean, the second one, uh, having a guy trained now to, uh, get his license. So, state requires we have these certain individuals that are trained and on our staff, seem to keep them, can't seem to get individuals in here too. It's not a, not a career job. Works or for a city, I make, hey, this is great, let's go work for the city. We're, we're very low on the hiring pool, a lot of guys, a lot easier jobs, more pay out there, so.
So, when you, I mean, I always said this isn't gonna be solved in this conversation, you know, but, um. So, in planning ahead, just like we do on this five-year plan. You know, for the requirements we need to make, you know, and, and it's just like an electrician, you know, these guys, you can't just send them to school and get a certification, they have to have this time under their belt. And so, what do you have in your department, guys, that you can be moving toward those certifications, are you in there too, it sounds like?
How to say this politely? New, the new employees that we've hired has no desire to move over to, uh, get that qualifications, that experience. I have had a difficult time even to get their CDLs with U P A, I mean, what, what a great, what a great thing, I mean, here's company at pace, if you to get your CDLs, class P's. I don't seem to care.
And that's like five weeks, five years, uh, five weeks.
No, we train in house, I'm a certified trainer, I train in house. We, we're able to do that.
I'm gonna retire, I might.
Yeah. I mean, I, I like big trucks. I'm registered by the state and, and the, uh. E M B as a certified trainer, so. We do train in house, so the guys are just, they have to take the written test and take the driving, so.
You're bringing that to our attention, you're looking at two years.
Less than two years, we're gonna lose, we're gonna lose three percent of our.
So is that following the board then, to help you replace these jobs?
Do you guys suggestions, that'd be great, because I can't seem to be able to do it.
Well, I think it's up to our box here, we have these rehabilitation cell tier per, there's a lot of men there. And those men be used?
That's two employees I've hired, and then individuals went to rehab, and, and good individuals. Now, I, I interview everybody in every once come in and.
You're ahead, I mean. You know, the good suggestion, is it an issue of pay scale, like?
Yeah, it's hard to, you know, you're paying sixteen eighty-nine an hour, and the benefit package doesn't seem to impress people anymore, it's a pay, uh.
So, you know, when you talk about. Perception's reality, right, we had the same situation in the police department, and we ended up throwing more money at hourly rate in addition to additional pen, the additional benefits that we have. You know, it's always been the whole market city, and this is true citywide, not senior departments, that, you know, that, that we have focused on the quality of the benefit package. Quality of the health insurance, which is not cheap.
Right.
And I know that our existing city employees, especially the aging population, we have, the health insurance benefits are important. And the quality of it's very, because that can get real expensive in a hurry if you have health problems. The question would be whether, maybe we talked to Schwedman and people we've dealt with on this, is there, would there be a way to. Have like a cafe plan where you could say, I'll take less in benefits or opt out of retirement, take more, you know, because. You know, when you look at the total labor burden, if people appreciate just what it is the city offers, then, you know, that's a pretty attractive package. Just talking about you, you're not take home pay, um, you know, and, and you discount, or don't take it, because we had the same issue in the police department, we changed pension. Um, the, I don't know whether that, you know, because if that's what it's gonna take, you know, it can't just keep piling on, because it's just like Amy talked about in our last council meeting, you know, when she's talking about the budget. We don't have a lot of room, right, and so if we're gonna, you know, get something here, it's gonna have to come from somewhere else. And, you know, and, and of course, it's not gonna make the rest of our city employees all of a sudden, because it was like in what, twenty? Probably twenty, twenty. Probably twenty twenty, when the cities, the boys, they went to eight percent, that they're paying on the health insurance in that past, something like, something in there. You know, but, but the other thing is, is to market it, right, because if people don't understand and appreciate, you know, that, uh, you know, and, and then, and I don't even know if I'm allowed to say this, but I'm not an H R, so I can't say anything. You know, the, uh, you know, that, that our. Health insurance experience within our cohort, our population employees definitely impacts our health insurance rates, you know, so us old farts, folks. You know, negatively impact our health insurance rates too, um, you know, so when you're talking about the Joe's point. You know, that what can the board do to help? What can the city do, can we stratify anyway, because, you know, it's a lot more physical job to work in your department than it is to work in administration of the city. You know, I, I don't know, but, you know, can, is there any way. To lawfully restructure your benefit packages, you know, as to what it is that's gonna take to attract these guys, because again.
Yeah, hang on a second, we have an expert. I mean, we've always said that the city of Vienna has a Cadillac. What are we missing in, in the benefit package, health-wise, that would make it more attractive, because I'm gonna tell you. I've seen the numbers, and some of the things that we've paid for in the past are phenomenal. So what we're, what we've experienced in. What we're experiencing in the hiring area, what Greg is discussing is that these younger guys don't care about, they're not thinking about. When I'm turning sixty, or when I'm turning, you know, when I'm getting older, they're in their early twenties, they feel that they're healthy, they feel they need these things. So, you know, to say you've got excellent healthcare doesn't attract them because they're not necessarily using it right now. Uh, so they just look at the amount of money in which they can put in an hourly rate, because it's not attractive to them. I stayed twenty-five years in the military, one, you know, one added reason was to have affordable healthcare the rest of my life. These guys aren't, if you talk to H R, that's not even a, a thing that's on their radar when you're talking to. You know, they just wanna, how much am I making an hour, will you get healthcare, you get this or you get, I, I, my teeth's fine, and my eyes are fine, I don't, I, how much am I getting in my hour rate? But I don't know that we can legally say. Let them opt out of healthcare, we mandate it.
Yeah, because we, and it's exactly what we had with the police department. Great pension, don't care, right, and so we have made the change, right, we went to the state pension, increased the hourly rate. Helped us on the pension side, helped the new officers on the wage side, all the officers.
I think, John, I mean, I hired for our, and I think part of it is, look at our board, I'm just, we not know this guy. I care more about retirement, I care more about health insurance, I mean, he's that stuff. When you're eighteen years old, you got a kid on your, you got, you're able, you feel good, don't worry about what's gonna happen. I did the same thing twenty years ago, and the problem is, you said, you started sixty bucks an hour, I can make that, it should play, it's in my cash register. So, I understand not wanting the money, but I can. Aren't, and even in my business, getting a girl to answer the phone, and we're paying eighteen bucks an hour, because if not, she's. And I think you're in a worse situation than I am, my job's easy, you know, you sit there and answer her phone, or you take, you're talking annual work. But why do I want to do that for sixteen bucks an hour if I have to pay? So I think realistically, you're gonna have to look at pension, because you're not gonna have anybody.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna throw out some numbers here, okay, we have class B truck drivers, C D Ls, the fire, I mean, I mean, the whole process of that. C D Ls, I mean, drug testing, the health, you know, all this stuff, have, be able to maintain your C D Ls, it's, it's a lot, and then you, you, you hire a guy and have his C D Ls, he gets put up. To snare, so they're getting seventeen, say seventeen, twenty-five an hour. Pass a billboard all day long, John Brown hired thirty-four dollars an hour, I mean, it's like, he's running ads on billboards, he still can't get people at thirty-four dollars an hour?
Breaking ass, well, it sucks. Worse than what you do here, probably.
And then you get Perper, I talked to Tim Perper down there, he's, he's pulling guys that start at twenty dollars an hour, he's struggling, I don't know, he's got a good health. Yeah, and, and so I'm asking, I'm like a used car salesman, I'm not interviewing people anymore, I'm sitting there, I'm trying to give them a package, trying to sell them something to come to get her. It's completely different when it used to be, it used to be, you'd sit there and say, hey, look, you want this job this way, you might fit, and I was like, well, I can give you this, this is an ad, would you please come? And these guys like, ah, I know. And these guys are like, nah, I don't know.
This is probably a part of conversation.
Every year happens. So, budget time's coming up, so.
And Rod, I didn't mean to cut, I cut, then we cut back.
Yeah, I'm like. I'll tell you something else that's gonna happen. All right, with AI and everything that's, that's going on and the displacement and the job market is gonna happen, this is gonna dumb some people down into this kind of world. You don't, I don't know who else is using AI in the work. I'm using it extensively. What'd you say?
I don't know if I should take offense to that or not.
Well, that's all right. The, well, I'm talking, no, I'm talking about you, you, you look at the impact on computer programming, on some of these fields that are just gonna go away. We're gonna have a shift in our society in the bigger picture. And so when you're talking about the approaches in order to make the city more attractive for a place of employment, you know, whereas, you know, I, I think it is education first of all. You know, that this really is, you need to consider the, the full picture. And that might need to be more than kind of a sit-down interview that we've got some more prepared materials and say, think ahead, young man, you know, in terms of what, what this life is gonna look like for you. Uh, and, you know, to Ross' point, if we need to reevaluate how we can leverage benefits versus pay, because on the other hand, because we're gonna have a negative on that too, because we can't let all of our low-risk employees opt out of our health insurance and then we're just left with all the expensive guys, then our rates are gonna go, I mean, that's gonna have a negative impact, right, Rod? I mean, in terms, so you can't really, you know, the problem with cherry picking that is that then that's just still gonna leverage our costs in a negative way of our health insurance. I think education is important, looking at that area and then, you know, and trying to, you know, maybe then when you get these guys in-house and open, you know, you know, is it pride in your work or is it sliding your work? I see that. I see this change in, in just, you know, but building that culture, that can always make a difference. To say, this is the standard that we have, this is the reason we do what we do. And I think that can get some traction with people. But, you know, getting, you know, you're right. I mean, we got such a, a resource, Rod's experience on this health insurance piece. You know, and then the, and just, you know, all, just the, the total reevaluation of, because that budget's coming up, right? It's like you said, and like you said, you know, when you don't have these people, then what? You know, just like, I, I mean, you know, because the conversation came up a few years ago, you know, we talk about, you know, your class one or class two, what about you? You, you know, your hair's not getting any browner, right? And so, you know, what's it gonna take to replace you? Certainly not what we pay you.
I still, I speak, I speak, but peace.
So I think what Mr. Swit said, I agree a hundred percent. I have a little knowledge of the mission. Even if we change and can change all of our things, the savings is not going to be that great. It's not going to be enough to make us more desirable. At the end of the day, your start is an hour. And I'm starting a mile off, it's a person who can't even pull their butt. There's no pride in work that'll make me wanna break my back and injure and make a dollar something less an hour. It's just, it's not realistic. We can market it and sell it how it's wanted, say, think about your retirement. But at the end of the day, why would I want to do a job for a buck something less an hour? It's gonna break my back and tear me out if I can sell my life. But that makes you, in particular, I'm talking about the majority of the bottom of the job.
I don't agree with that. There are people have no interest whatsoever being in an office, being, there's a, there's the mentality that some people are like that. And, but here's the, the point of the health insurance. It could be big savings in this city if we revamped our entire health insurance, all right? It would be much to the detriment of our loyal employee base. They would get screwed, but we could save a ton of money on health, on benefits if we shifted that to wages, if in fact were constrained by the budget that we live with. And which is what I've learned in my time on council, you know, the nature of, of government, right? You know, so, so there are options and they're hard choices. You know, I think education always is a fundamental of it. And again, if you can take some of this culture in your department, saying, I don't know what to do, you know, that, I mean, it's, but I do, I do believe that you're gonna see more entrance into the labor market because of AI. I do believe that's gonna happen. Uh, because there's gonna be jobs that are not gonna be there. A lot of, yeah, because I've seen it in my, just in my little businesses, you know, where I don't need, you know, the things that I used to have, you know, two people need to do, I can do it fifteen minutes. It's incredible, incredible. Just the leverage that AI is, is bringing to my work. And that means it's gonna displace jobs. I mean, the studies are there, it's gonna happen. Now, whether we could trickle that down into our opportunity, I don't know, but at least something to consider as you're moving forward. Say, you know, if it's the type of work that somebody has the stomach for.
To think about that, you just said there's billboards in town for people who don't want office jobs, that have CDLs to drive trucks. Did you say thirty some dollars an hour? Then how in the heck can you do that at sixteen bucks an hour? No matter how much education, how much benefits, how much variable benefits, I'm not gonna work for you for sixteen bucks an hour if I have to pay thirty bucks a month.
But even thirty-four dollars an hour, I'll have a hard time buying it.
City basically runs ninety-three, fifty, eighty-five, okay? These guys that run that asphalt trucks, you're a crack of dawn and you're still there until it's over. There's like, there's a difference in the quality of the job because of the effort you have to put forward, all right?
Yeah, working for John Brown, A.
Fifteen bucks an hour, we're not giving one night.
Right.
Something's not right.
This is nothing new, okay? I mean, I, I agree with Craig. It's gonna get worse and worse. When we lose a handful of guys, the years of experience that go out the door, you have to replace them, all right? But the reality of it is, what was last year's budget? Eleven million dollars, Chad? Eleven million dollars. Health insurance was over ten percent of that. Okay, now where are you gonna find the extra revenue that you're gonna take? Put this benefit package together that you wanna do.
I understand you. I, I know it's tight, but we gotta do something, because, you know, I get, last guy I interviewed, or two, two guys first started days, you know, he was making twenty-two dollars an hour.
At, at the end of the day, you have to, you have to take every aspect. You have to pull it together. You have to create an environment in which people wanna collectively take everything together and work. And that's pay, that's benefits, that's work environment, that's, uh, opportunity for growth. All of this is a much wider stroke than just saying we need to increase pay, we need to do this. It's how from start to finish, how do you retain people that you hire, for one? You can hire somebody, but then you have to keep them. Uh, but then when you're replacing individuals that have been here that have, that have kind of employees for a different reason, you have to create that entire realm in which they want to be a part of it. It sounds crazy and maybe nobody will believe me, but people will work for less money in some, in an environment and for a company, corporation, business, whatever it may be, that they want to be a part of. How do we create in Vienna the environment that they want to be a part of? One is, you take care of your people. You do these things, you do the extra stuff, put forth the extra. You have employees that feel like their employer has their back, is supportive of them, and does work together, uh, for the betterment of the entire program. These are all things that take multiple steps to happen. It's more than just saying, we gotta increase our range from sixteen dollars to eight. Because if a person doesn't like where they work, it don't matter how much money you're gonna pay them. They're not gonna wanna come to work. I have always said, I may not be able to provide you an environment that you want to come to work, but I can provide you an environment that you won't hate coming. And we have to address some of those various things over the years that, uh, may cause that. But then, in a long term, keeping individuals still to stay in the employment of Vienna, making it a place that they wanna stay, that they wanna build a career, and that they're willing to do.
And you have that. And once you get them there, you, you're pretty good to keep them. I think the city is.
I mean, I hate to classify younger generation, older generation stuff. The older guys are, are, they understand, they, they get it. But the younger guys, I mean, let's face it, you can run the numbers in our employees compared to per tab, what part of the tabs? I mean, they have twice as many employees, what we do, per tab, or wire to a tab. So, guys are underpaid over work. You can, you can throw a party for them, you get pizza parties for them, but if you work a guy to death, I guess that's good. And that's what's happening in this department, where we can't fill the voids that we have, so the employees that we have are I can't say it, but they're being abused. I mean, we're just, the, the good employees, we're just working and working and working. And it goes back to our next thing. I mean, you look at what we're doing in the evenings. The other subject, but the next item is, you know, is valve replacement. You know, this Friday, starting at seven, water shuts off at ten at night. You got, you know, five, six guys out there working on a Friday night, valve replacement, uh, on Third Street. So, I mean, they're gonna work during the day and then come back down and work at night. It, it is a three-day weekend, but some of them guys are still on call this weekend, so I have to have guys on call. But one of the guys that are on call that has to work, come back in at six in the morning, start doing the rounds. You know, our job is a twenty-four, seven job.
Aren't you paying them almost thirty dollars an hour to work on that valve replacement?
Overtime? Yeah, but still, you got the guy down there.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing. You're in the main.
I need to say, Parker, I just know his pay scale. I mean, you're paying, starting at twenty dollars an hour, and he's getting substantial bonuses every year. He can give bonuses. You can't even give him a kidney for that. And what do you get? Twenty-five dollars a max you give out to any employee, right? Pipe wrench?
Yeah, pipe wrench.
Boy, that pipe wrench, I like that. No, but yeah, seriously, we can't give the bonuses out to the guys. You know, we say, hey, we appreciate what you do, uh, we need you to work twelve hours a week. And the older guys are okay. The younger guys are like, I don't wanna do that. I'm gonna get my buddies this weekend. I'm gonna do this. I don't wanna get the experience. I don't want to work with CDLs, because if I work with my CDLs, that, you'll put me on call. Because I'm understaffed, I'm calling, I'm calling individuals. I got some guys that work two months out of the month, two, two weeks out of the month, on call. I don't have enough people to fill positions. That's, I mean, that's, that's stressful. And you're set by the front for two weeks of your life, two weeks out of the month. You know, sitting there waiting for someone to call you, and they get called, especially like deer, fire leaks. You know, people calling at four o'clock in the morning, goes or, or water. It's not the paid work environment it used to be. I ain't, I ain't say that. I, I like working. A lot of the guys that work here, it's just not a warm and fuzzy place to work. That's not food, man. That's not food, man. That's not food in there. It's, it's working. Maybe understaffed. Maybe it is, I don't know. Trust me, when I leave, it's not gonna be better, but I'm and you get, you learn to be a little bit more lean, okay? I mean, and I work construction, right? It's a construction.
You old softy.
It's twenty hours a day, you work or, you know, you hit the road, that kind of stuff. You, you, you don't do that anymore. You know, a guy calls in and says, hey, my, my wife's sick or my kid's sick, and they all, oh, absolutely. Be with your family. I'm with family, with the kids and stuff. I, be more generous about it. You gotta be. That's part of the bonus package, be it all. About anything. But I, I still think, I mean, I've preached for years and I'll, I'll continue to preach it, is we need additional employees, we need higher, higher wages. That's it. Like I said, it's taken a long time. I know we've talked about this for twenty minutes. We're gonna have to address it sometime. We're, we're not gonna, next two, two years, you're, you're not gonna have water to run work. You have to have class two operators. Right now, two class two operators, three. One have left. I mean, I, he's a great employee. Uh, I'll say his name, Jason Mortson. As you know, he's a great employee. Scares death if he ever looks at Parkersburg or, or Meeks Town or anything else, because he's gonna make a substantial lot more money elsewhere than he is here. He's, he's a good employee, so. All right, that's enough. We'll go on with the manager report. A couple of things, like I said, this, this Friday, we are doing a valve replacement on on Twenty-third Street and Eighth Avenue. We'll have Eighth Avenue closed down seven, seven, twenty-seven PM from Grand Central to Eighth Avenue. Uh, the water will be shut up at ten, ten PM, they'll get back online. Uh, there's this wide area that's gonna be closed off for, you know, shutting up water. We posted, um, the valve system's, uh, gonna be starting to hound the people out here next phase, A, your work, y'all, so. That'll be the first one. Uh, Forty-sixth Street and Tenth Avenue valves gonna be replaced, uh, the next two weeks. That's gonna be done during the day. That's not gonna affect any businesses, it's gonna fix, fix some residents, but you get that done during the day, because it isn't state ray. And the, the third one is the Thirty-second Street, Grand Central. That's just beginning. Uh, once we replace these, usually we have to shut the valves off, they break, and we that is part of the project you opened today, valve replacements, line replacements, so that's good. Three years when it is done, uh, four years, you know, but next Thursday, I, I talked to you earlier about it, uh, the MWQA meeting is in Charleston. Mike, you going down?
Yes.
So I, I will be going to that also. There's some things I need to catch up on, regulations and stuff, so I'll be heading down to that too. I need you to be going, so what we'll do, take the safety truck down, get to Red Bell. Anybody else who wanna go, you're more than welcome. It's a great meeting. You want us to do, they do feed you, they do feed you well. Uh, but it does, they talk about a lot of, a lot of, a lot of good stuff, and I need to get back in. Have to get down to a little bit slower. Five o'clock's done, slower, so. You get that done in the alleyway. Building, uh, they finished up wiring most of yesterday, the, wait for the power to come. Building, uh, they finished up wiring most of yesterday, the, wait for the power to come in, there'll be two weeks for the actual power. It is, it is completed outside, ready for use, so, a nice building. Won't take long to fill up. Uh, next week, guys will be down on the edge of the High River, get prepared for the blow in the ocean, next Saturday. Need some work down there, fencing on the edge of the riverbank, on the river, so. Doing various jobs throughout the city, at least pick up any to them, it seems like this past week, at least, I'd say, we're all coming down. Uh, individual owners, six weeker, Brian Raider, he's been out sweeping, they get repaired. That'll be us then, y'all, next few months. We will do, need to pick up our crews, if you had these in the yard, or make up, I guess, give us a call, pitch us this, we'll drop them off.
When, when does that start?
It's first starting the first November, but if some reason, the leaves don't come down now, so we'll probably start.
Trying to set a date, like?
Well, we said the date, first November, there's, there's people always calling, and that's, that's what we're more about. We got the guys free with some. Uh, snow removal, it's coming up, Republic Works, we're gonna be working on the salt trucks, I'm ready. Auction stuff's going out for council tomorrow night, approval, did it out the, our next week's, um, auction stuff. Go get rid of our junkyards out back.
You wanna talk about the main valve replacement?
For, uh, the force main? That was a weird mean, that's different. Uh, yeah, uh, very, very important, the person JJ was very
Very, very, uh, old gentleman.
Yeah.
Uh, million dollars, uh, move the main replacement. Parsonsburg, about that, well, actually, sitting out there, a bit of proof, and nobody, well, therein, let anybody know. Until a conversation came up one day, well, hey, you guys got this, they didn't let us know. We did get that, uh, it was sitting there, uh, we went through the process, we all, all met about how although the money's there, we still have to go through the application process. Uh, Tony is working, like, that process for us, that application for us along with the people that are in Maryland that are, you know, seeing all of that project, so, uh, that is moving right along. I think, what, what did you plan, next year?
Yeah, yeah, instructions should start probably next year.
Yeah, I don't guess it's the Walmart.
Well, it sounds better when I say it.
Okay, I know, Mike, we, they, they asked how long, what's the length of it, and I said about a mile, that's, that got us to Walmart. And, uh, yeah, I know it's two miles and something, but it's like, oh, a million dollars doesn't really get us there, that's before we're gonna use that for the first section, second section, yeah. But it should be a lot nicer, probably. It should go a lot better route. And increase size when it passes. Anything else?
You all received from that service company that looks like such an official Vienna and we get absolutely nothing out of that, and yet they're making it look like we're endorsing that one thing.
There's the symbol on it, I mean, it says the city thing right up on top of it. Yeah, and it's like. Yeah.
Did that, put out information, it's not a city, it's not a city program.
Did, did you put it out?
I, I, that's all you can do.
Yeah, that's all, and we, we've been tested on several occasions, and we'll continue. I didn't see it, as people, people continued, uh,
I appreciate it, guys. All right, any comments? Pat, we're adjourned.